Yeah, definitely. It's just the same, like, sometimes. Yeah, it is still, yeah. I also have my son.
We're in adjourned closed session, a reconvened open session, open session. Carol Brown, would you please, the president?
Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you, Carol. There was no action taken in closed session today. With the board's admission, I'm going to ask that we move discussion item B on board policy and residency to in front of item A on action items. Would be okay with that? Great. Now it's time for public comment. Persons may speak on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Speakers are requested to fill out a speaker card and to state their name and address before addressing the board. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to for any item not on the agenda no more than three minutes in order to allow everyone who wishes to speak the opportunity to do so. Rules are asked to limit their comments to a total of 10 minutes. The board shall limit the total time of public comments 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Additional time is needed, public comment will be continued after the discussion ends. So Brendan Iverson.
Oh, she had to step out.
She stepped out? Maybe we'll come back to her. You can do that. Katie Fadendas.
Hi, I'm Katie Fadendas.
No, you wouldn't like your addis, but you know, for that.
I'm a current TK parent at Delray, and I'm here to speak on behalf of extending kindergarten. My son will be attending kindergarten at Delray next year. I'm a big supporter of this, and I would love to see it on the agenda for next month. I think it just developmentally makes a lot of sense, and I've heard and read a lot of amazing things, so thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Bjornson.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Bjornson. I'm in Arinda resident.
Don't worry about the mic.
Oh, you don't need to. I have a first grader and a third grader at Glorietta Elementary School, and a four-year-old who attends Stevens Preschool in Lafayette. When we first moved to Arinda from Oakland four years ago, I was unaware that the Arinda school did not offer an extended or a full kindergarten day district wide. I feel fortunate that my older children were able to benefit from an extended day that up until this past year was offered at Glorietta Elementary. It made my child's transition from a five-hour preschool day to a four-hour, 25-minute kindergarten day much smoother than many of our Lafayette peers who at that time only had a three-hour, 20-minute kindergarten day. It further resulted in an even better transition to an almost six-hour, technically five-hour and 55-minute first grade day. The extended kindergarten day, Glorietta previous to this 275 minutes long, it allowed teachers the ability to create a more balanced and spread-out, yet cohesive, learning environment with more opportunity for free and structured play breaks and a kinder-only lunch during appropriately scheduled school day. It has been cited these breaks result in better focus for many young children. This model also allowed our kindergarten teachers to continue working with at least half of our first grade students by providing tier-one preventative reading instruction time in the early bird morning period. This likely kept a number of first graders from falling into the tier-two category. Given the increasing academic demands that are placed on our children in kindergarten at three-hour and 30-minute packed-in kindergarten day cannot possibly do an adequate job of touching on the critical social, emotional, or physical developmental needs that are necessary for academic achievement. Given the recent approval of an extended kinder-day, in the city of Lafayette, I would like the Arinda School District to consider, at the very least, moving all of our schools back to a similar and successful extended-day model that both Glorietta and Sleepy Hollow used to have. More than that, given the new requirements of Common Core, I would not want to limit us to just adding time for play and lunch, but also consider the demands of the Common Core curriculum. Instructure a day that helps to meet these requirements could still allow for critical social, emotional, and physical development that are key components of future academic success. I believe in the future and continued success of Arinda schools. We must do our best to meet the demands of an ever-changing landscape, academic landscape, and this begins with our very young. Thank you for your time. I hope that the board will continue to look into and consider extending our kindergarten day. I would also like to request this item be placed on the February 9th school board agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deanna Wood.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Wood, and I have a first grader and incoming kindergartner with a 2015-16 year at Sleepy Hollow Elementary. And I wanted to just thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to share my thoughts with you. We moved to Arinda for the excellent school district. Throughout the three years of living here, we've been overwhelmed by the community's support, teachers and parents combined. I'm here tonight in support of extending the kindergarten day and hope that it can be added to the school board agenda for your next scheduled meeting on February 9th. Given the increasing academic demands that are placed on our children in kindergarten, I just don't feel that a three-hour and 30-minute day does an adequate job of touching on the critical social, emotional, and physical developmental needs that are necessary for academic achievement. My daughter Phoebe, who is now in first grade, had a terrific entry into elementary school as a kindergartner. She just loved it. She was right on par with the standards that were expected of her and even overachieved in a few areas. However, where I feel she was ill-prepared was the rush, rush of the day and never quite figured out how to finish or to eat for lunch. In talking with other parents, they had similar concerns with the rushed day and agreed a longer day would give these children not only more time for eating, but for the essential reading and writing time, areas where these parents felt their children might have been lacking. So again, I think it's in our best interest, especially with the new Common Core standards and all that is expected of them throughout the year, that we extend the day and give these children ample time to not only learn this new curriculum, but allow the educators more time to focus on each child's specific areas of need. Thank you again, and I hope you'll consider adding this to your agenda for next meeting.
Thank you very much. Alexis Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Robinson, and I really appreciate you allowing me to speak this evening. I am a, I grew, actually grew up in Arinda and went to Glorietta Elementary School for grades third through sixth. So when I had the opportunity, or my husband and I had the opportunity to move back to Arinda, we jumped at the chance with our family because of, you know, we have, we have family here. My parents still live here in the same house. My two sisters are here, and my brother's here. And so that was one of the reasons we moved back here, but the other reason was because of the excellent schools that we have here in Arinda. So I, right now, have three daughters. One is in fifth grade, one is in third grade, and the other one is in kindergarten, and they're all at Glorietta. My kindergartner actually did the TK program at Glorietta, so they've all benefited from the extended day that we had at Glorietta for kindergarten. And this year, I'm noticing that with the shorter day, my kindergartner comes home and she's, she's stressed out, and she is tired, and she doesn't seem to enjoy school as much as she did, and, and one of her laments is she doesn't get to play with her friends as much at recess. But, you know, I, I know there are other reasons. You know, I, I think just the Common Core and things are changing at, at school as, as we're putting in a new curriculum, so that might be part of it. But I've, I've just noticed a difference. I, I felt like the longer day was, was very successful. My kids learned how to be students, which is very important in kindergarten. They got to go to the lunchroom and have kids, have lunch like the big kids did. And I, I just think that the day being more drawn out gave the teachers, or gave our teacher a chance to go through the curriculum, take a break, reset their, their minds, come back in and, and work on the next thing. I've also noticed that since I've been helping out in the classroom, the class seems more rushed, more stressed, let's get on to the next thing, let's get on to the next thing again because of the compressed timeframe. That's how I feel as a parent. It's a lot different than what I experienced in the past with my other girls, so I would love to see extended day come back, and if it's something you can add to the next board meeting, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Brendan Iverson.
She's not back.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Next, we're going to do recognitions, which are our employees of the month. First employee of the month that we'd like to recognize is Patsy Templeton. Patsy's our district technology coach. Patsy Templeton is a source of inspiration, always on the cutting edge of technology and always willing to share her knowledge. Patsy's vision, experience, patience, and professional skill for training and promoting teacher knowledge for high-quality instruction using technology is a tremendous asset to the instructional program in our district. Patsy's work is integral to the technology endeavors at every site. She continually guides and supports our professional development for Common Core standards and 21st century learning. She taters training and classroom support based on the needs of the teachers at each site and is extremely responsive to addressing the varying needs of teachers, administrators, and students daily. The entire leadership team unanimously recognizes and appreciates her leadership. Thanks a lot. Congratulations. And next, we have Michelle Bromback. Michelle is a Delray school secretary. Michelle Bromback recently stepped into the role of school secretary at Delray School, and we are so glad to have her on board. Her positive, calm demeanor has put the community at ease. As the point of contact for our school, we appreciate her warmth and helpful qualities. She always treats students kindly. In addition, she has had to learn to navigate our school, UNIS, and more. She manages all of the district data and purchasing for the school while keeping track of the many different categories of money to keep us afloat. It is a job of multitasking, and her prioritizing is on the mark. We thank her for all of her work. Next, we have the consent calendar. Items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There's no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member of the board staff or public requests the sub items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. It is understood that the administration recommends approval on all consent items. Each item on the consent calendar approved by the board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to adopt the consent calendar. It's approved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Can she name this? Thank you. So we've moved discussion item B to the next item. So this is still a discussion item. Board Policy 5111 Student Admission and Administrative Regulation, 5111.1 District Residency. The board will conduct a review of the board policy and administrative regulation. So this is on page 183 of our packet. So the reading. Introduce this agenda for us, that'd be great.
Board Policy 5111 Admissions and Administrative Regulation on District Residency was accepted by the Board of Trustees on April 9th, 2012. The board has requested both the board policy and administrative regulation to be presented tonight for discussion.
So this is a, this can be a large topic. There are a lot of board policies out there. I know that board members have an opportunity to look at some other school district board policies and administrative regulations. So this item has been requested by the board, so we are, we are free to discuss it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, might want to explain to the audience that we'll have a time where people can also.
Yeah, so after, after the board has their discussion, we'll have the beginnings of our discussion, then we'll open up a public comment on this specific item, and the board will discuss it further. It is a discussion item only, so no action will be taken tonight. Anybody on board?
I don't have specific questions.
We're here to discuss. Yeah, let's, let's do our discussion. Does anybody have any specific questions for Lorraine? That's the discussion you get. Julie?
Well, my thoughts on the residency policy and looking at, well, first of all, as, as we've been starting to look at this policy, I started to think to myself, you know, I have two kids at Miramani and I have one kid, a child at Delray. And at Miramani, every year, I have to provide documentation, you know, showing that I'm a resident, that my child's a resident. And I think I did it once when my son entered elementary school, and I've never had to do that again. So part of my thought process in all this is that maybe we need to be firming up that policy, or a policy says that we shall, you know, that we shall require proof of residency every year, and I'm just wondering how everyone feels about actually trying to enforce that piece of it so that, you know, as we're modifying this policy in some other ways, that I also think could be useful, that we're also actually requiring it. I know it will be, you know, it does add somewhat of a burden to parents to come up with that documentation every year, and it creates some, some additional administrative burden. Work, something, burden. So, you know, I'm thinking, trying to think this through in my mind, but to me, you know, it's like, Miramani requires it, so we do it, and that's that. And, you know, if you don't do it, your kid doesn't get to go there, so you kind of deal with it. So I don't know. That's my initial thought. And then, you know, as I was going through this and comparing this to some other policy, what really has struck me is how, you know, I think there's a lot of cleanup work we can do to, just on the language of the policy and maybe shortening it a bit, and then also working on the notice requirements once we have evidence of that someone is not truly a resident, that we can maybe do something like a FAFAD with their notice and appeal process. Those are my sort of global thoughts. I have a lot of specific detailed, you know, notes and things, so it would be, those are my two main points that I'm thinking of.
Great.
Matt, would it be helpful, would you like us all to get sort of those main points out on the table? And then maybe we get into the, okay. Well, I have some points too, and I have seven of them. And as I was taking some time thinking about it, I put those notes and organized them together along with some other sample policies, and I talked with the superintendent about this. And so this is a public document now that I'm sharing it here, and I have some additional available for anyone in the audience who wants to see it. But I'm going to explain it quickly here, just like Julie did.
Carol?
In terms of, that would be great.
Thank you.
One of the comments is very much like Julie's second comment, that I think we could do with some organizational work, some roadmapping on this policy, that looking at the policy for the first time, you have some subheadings that take you somewhere, and then it, and it seems to jump topics a little bit. The administrative, the policy itself has an introductory paragraph, which I think is a nice introductory paragraph. It reaffirms the policy of a commitment to providing an opportunity of educational services to all children, and the policy also recognizes that non-resident students may apply for inter-district attendance. I think we should mirror that introduction in the regulation, more detailed regulation, and put a little meat on it to explain that the regulation is going to talk about that process, potentially the notice of that process, potentially the appeal of that process. And I think that would help a lot, to sort of help this regulation speak to the community when they see it. I think that providing education means admitting students when they provide adequate proof of residency, and I think we should say that. I think we should say that we have an inter-district attendance program, which the board recently amended. It's referenced there, but if you can more specifically reference so people understand where they go for that and understand the difference. And I also think it would be good to have a statement that, of the district being committed to preserving the privacy and the due process rights of all involved. And one of the reasons why I think it's important to mention the inter-district transfers is to build an understanding in the community that our district has made the choice that, that the law allows different choices for, but our district has made the choice that the residents of Arinda have those first opportunities for educational seats. And then, as noted in the communication from the board last year, the district has been quite inclusive in providing inter-district transfers. And I think we should recognize both that fact and those values right in our statement. So that'd be sort of an approach to the regulation. Second, I think where we want to spend some time, the key standard in this policy is two standards, one that applies to staff and one that applies to the superintendent. And that is, if any district employee reasonably believes that a parent or guardian of a student has provided false or unreliable evidence of residency, the superintendent or designated shall make reasonable efforts. So there are two reasonable standards there, reasonably believes and, and reasonable efforts. And if you look at various policies in other districts, that's a common language in district policies. And I don't know whether we want to put some more meat on that in our policy. We could, we could provide examples of what could lead a district employee to reasonably believe. We could provide examples of what reasonable efforts are, including hiring an investigator. There are pros and cons to being more specific in the policy, but I really like us as a board to talk about that. I think it helps provide guidance to staff. Third, in the policy, on the second page, and honestly, I can't quite make sense of it, and I haven't seen it referenced in other policies, is the term, it's on the top of page 188. The parent, after, after our administrative regulation explains the ways that you show residency, it then says, "A parent or guardian unable to provide the previous information due to alternative living arrangements must provide the following three items." So it's sort of another avenue, but I wasn't sure what alternative living arrangements were.
My version, I just have to leave it on the entire.
Yeah, I just, I would rather, unless we can define.
I think we need to, like, we'll have to go line by line.
By line, yeah. That made no sense to me.
But, I mean, there's.
Yeah. I think after that is then when we get into determining residency, and I think we can label that, the standard in the policy is the sort of standard policy for residency, well-tested, that it is the, residence is the place except in times of labor, that is the place that one returns for clothes. Nice old language that's been around for a while. And, and I actually think staying with that standard makes sense because it's been tested and it's driving through, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't talk about it. I noticed that in some other policies, Palo Alto, Irvine, they put a day requirement on that, five days or seven days.
And in other places, they don't have that.
At all.
They don't have that language in there at all in any of the local ones.
So that's something to talk about, I think. I, I worry about trying to put a day requirement on, because I think then, you know, it's a bright line, but it could create some unintended consequences, so I just put that out. Fifth, I really do agree with what Julie suggested. I think we should consider expanding the revocation of enrollment section, drawing from the Lafayette and Maraga policies, and we should consider talking about timeline and.
We should talk about that because what Maraga does is different than what Lafayette does.
Yes.
And one's more protective of student rights, I guess, the Lafayette policy, with more notice and appeal requirements than Maraga, and I think, I think, I agree with most of our policies. So we need to talk about which direction we want to go.
Yeah, I agree with that. And there, there are two elements to it. There is the notice, and then there's the appeal. And my six-point is, is the appeal. I personally feel we should consider a board appeal, and I think, you know, the Lafayette policy sort of walks through that. We should discuss it. And then I'll stop talking. The, the seventh thing I think we should consider is agreeing that we should strike alternative living arrangements. We might want to address what really are the arrangements of people in the district. We want to talk about, this came up in our forum the other day, divorced parents, parents.
Well, we do have language in there, and that's actually something that, you know, we have, you know, the whole language on page 188, and then they're all about custody arrangements.
Yeah, yeah.
And at first, I was like, gosh, nobody else really, I haven't seen this language anywhere else, but it does, having that language does provide people with a way to look and say to themselves, okay, you know, this is our custody arrangement, you know, under that arrangement, do reholy by for being considered resident here. So, you know, my gut is to keep that at this point, but, you know, again, something that we should all do. And same with the language above that about when your new parent just moved here and you might not have all the documentation at me. At first, I was like, nobody else really has that language in there, but maybe, you know, a lot of people do move early in the summer and it provides some, you know, way for them to enroll, even though they're pending their sale. for them to enroll, even though they're pending their sale of their, you know, the clothes of their home or something like that. So, you know, so part of me, at first, I was like, oh, I gotta rid of this whole page. And then I'm like, no, we should really keep that. And I think the language needs to, you know, the ed code is pretty clear on the proof of residency requirements.
Yes.
So I think we can just clean up that language pretty easily to just make it the ed code proof requirements. You know, again, to me, the big picture issues are, I think there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done on the regs. But, you know, my two issues are, you know, actually requiring people to provide the information every year, and then the notice procedure. And that's what's instilling me on all this.
And for me, that notice is really important, and two levels of notice. A notice of when the district has made a determination, district staff, and then the superintendent, and how that's noticed, and the detail of notice in that, which some policies speak to. And then the appeal process is another, another point.
I had several years on my list, the defining, the method of reasonable inquiry, and to retain including home residents, I think that's a much less expensive way of going about it and could result in a very brief process. I also appreciate your putting in the advance notice to the board. I really thought it must be unfortunate to have them sitting on the board and not know about it while you were sitting on the board. I really want to include a right of appeal. I think that's only fair. I noticed also that CSBA only recommends requiring two documentations or items of proof. And I'm wondering if, in some cases, it might be difficult to find two items of proof. It was just, that was just an observation. And those were my basic thoughts.
Carol?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with a lot of what's been said, however, I just wanted to say, to me, the big, well, let me back up. In terms of establishing residency, I also have a son who goes to Miramani, so I, and my daughter went to Miramani, so I know what you mean, Julie, about establishing residency every year there. I also noticed it takes a lot more staff time for them to do that. So if we were to change and do that, that's going to be a lot more staff time on our office staff in the fall. So I don't know if I think that's warranted or not for sure. I would rather hear from the superintendent on his thoughts on the staffing issue for that. And acknowledging that the whole reason this came up is because of one particular situation where this came up, so it isn't necessarily something where we want to just require everybody every year to come up with three pieces of documentation just because they do it in a high school. But with that said, when we do require, the notification we do require, I also noticed that CSBA only requires two absolute verifiable documents, and then an affidavit as the third document, which is something we could consider. It seems like that's only going to be necessary in certain, probably few situations if it is. And then aside from that, I think the, I think the bigger issues that are more important for us to talk about is what happens and what's in our policy if the situation comes up where residency is questioned. And I thought it was kind of odd to have two phrases in the same paragraph that say reasonable, what was that? If a staff person finds reasonably believes that there might be provided unreliable evidence of residency, then the superintendent shall make reasonable efforts to determine the student needs to legal residency requirements. So I would also there like to hear from the superintendent or staff about how do they determine what they think is reasonable efforts? Because we're not going to dictate in here exactly all the steps that staff is going to go through, but then on the other hand, we don't want to end up leaving a policy where we could end up with problems again the way we've faced in the last couple of months. So I would like to know what, you know, how do they go about deciding what are reasonable efforts? And I feel like, you know, I just want to say, as a board member, if there is a serious issue of residency where we're going to go to greater lengths, such as hiring a private investigator, I would rather know that that's happening rather than being out of a loop. So, I mean, we don't want to put that in a policy, but I think we need to talk about that. How do we, how do we as a board get informed when things aren't going smoothly on a policy like this? And then I agree, we should have some sort of appeal language here so that if there is a situation that's one of these less clear situations that, and there's some confusion about residency, the family has an opportunity to appeal to the board. I think that's...
Well, not only that, if the, if the notice is instead of being a disenrollment letter, is a notice that, you know, you need to keep 10 days to come in and provide...
Provide additional documentation.
And then if you're unhappy with that result, you also have to practice. That's a very different procedure.
Different, other procedure.
Right, right. And I think we should be doing what you just described, where if there's a question of residency, notify the family, give them 10 days to come back, or whatever number of days, but 10 days seems reasonable, come back with additional paperwork to show that they are...
And I'm like, the proof of, like, proof of residency. I mean, my son's a junior, and I haven't provided proof of resi... I've been at, you know, in the old USD school district since he was six, and that was the only time I ever provided proof of residency.
For the first year?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
For all my kids. I never had to do it the other two.
Same with my kids.
You know, so it is...
Oh, the other two.
Yeah, so, you know...
I don't remember.
I don't know how many years I've been there, but time, and, you know, and here's what can happen, so, I don't know.
That's true. See what you mean. Somebody could move and then just still be sending their child to school here or something.
Well, also underscores consistency. If it's always being done, it's always being done.
Right, plus it is our policy, so we shall...
Yeah, that's right.
You know, the policy itself, not the reg.
Yeah.
So I wanted to say one other thing about the alternative living arrangements. I don't know if we should necessarily take that out, but I also looked at it and thought to myself, does any other policies have that in there? Did anyone else see it? Okay. But we do want to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of places where we've got extended families and things like that, and this isn't just going to only fit for, you know, a parent. What if a grandparent is, you know, and we want to make sure those situations are all covered. If we take that out, we still have...
Do you still have the caregiver affidavit?
You have the caregiver affidavit, yeah, but you don't want to, I don't know the details enough about how caregiver affidavits work to know. If you have grandchildren living with grandparents, grandparents have to sign a caregiver affidavit and just because, you know, I don't know, there's things to think about with that. But I would rather hear from Joe or someone from the staff on that, or any of your opinions on that. But I also just want to say, and it mentions, your notes here mention Allenville. Several people have told me, oh, but the Allenville, you have to allow somebody who's working in the district to send their child to school in your district. And that's apparently the common understanding in some places, even not that distant around us, other districts. So, you know, and yet, my understanding is to say May, and we had a lot of discussion about this last year, but that's something we probably want to clarify. At the same time, I don't want us to look like we're being really exclusionary, but I want to respect the Arinda, Arinda residents, you know, the whole issue...
Districts can or cannot, they choose whether to adopt the Allenville, only one does not.
Right.
Well, we've chosen to be inclusive, and we have the convenience to be because they're interdistrict transfers.
Interdistrict transfers.
I'd like to say that.
So that's where, yeah, it would, it would be very important to have that interdistrict transfer language if somebody's being told they're not a resident, that they can't...
Well, it's in the criteria for residency.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Language of the bring.
Well, then, so does the staff carry that out whenever a situation comes up? That's what we want to know.
Okay.
So, those are all great comments, and I really appreciate them all. And a lot of thought, obviously, has gone into it. I also have some thoughts, and the bad part about being board president is you get to go last in all these discussions, so it's hard to have a new idea.
Use an original.
Put your point in.
No original thoughts.
You'll leave one up.
I do think that our, I would like our residency policy to be more like the high school district. I do think, I'd like to see it have more teeth. I like how Lafayette's policy essentially mirrors the high school district with three categories. You got to provide one documentation from each of the three categories, and I would like it to be done annually, hard and fast, annually. There's a, Albany, in its little pocket geographically, has a really strong school district, but there's a culture in Albany that people sneak into the district. And it's, it can be between 30, let's say 25 and 35% of students in that district actually don't have residency, don't file affidavits, they sneak into the district through all sorts of, all sorts of means to the point where it's almost become a culture in that district. And I don't want to go there in Arinda for a number of reasons. Number one being, I'm worried about physical constraints on classroom space. So I'd like to see us to go to a requirement with more teeth, something, I like something similar to what Almane's does. It is, it is a real pain every year. My wife and I look at each other, but after a while, you get the habit of you save your tax return, and you save your property tax bill, and you save a car insurance receipt or whatever it is, and you're able to do that. Recently, I haven't seen it, but my understanding is there's recently been a Craigslist ad from somebody purporting to be a landlord saying he can get anybody into Arinda schools through fake leases, et cetera, fake utility bills, all sorts of ways to do that. I think, you know, one of the reasons, I know that one of the reasons the high school district has such a stringent policy, requires it every year, is because they really had a situation where so many people were trying to sneak into the district. So I think it's important to be vigilant on that, on that front. You know, well, let's, let's hear from the board, because I do, I do have some more thoughts. So I would like to get public comment on this item. I do have one card from Miriam Storch.
Board members, thank you for discussing the district residency policy tonight. I am a firm believer in policy, and I know that by strengthening the district's policies, we can all move forward with the confidence that what happened to Miriam Vivian will not happen again. I am much encouraged by the discussion tonight and by this document that Jason has produced. Thank you, Jason, for taking the time to do that. I think it provides an excellent starting point, and where you go from here is obviously up to you. It's a big subject, as was noted at the beginning of discussions, but I think this is a great start. In the past month, I've had the chance to talk with a few of you, and to meet with them in person, a few of you on the phone. I've learned many things, but most astonishing was that the board didn't know about this case until it hit the papers. In some ways, it was a relief to know that the board was not behind the investigation nor the initial letter that Maria received, but it's also alarming that such things are happening at the district office without the board's knowledge. It begs the question of what else is happening in the district where the families and employees involved may feel too fearful or too overwhelmed or overpowered to come forward. In many cases, they may have assumed that a fight is pointless if they believed, as we did, that the board was already against them. I hope in that regard that the board will examine how it stays abreast of disputes within the district and how it makes itself available to families and employees who need their help. I think a more proactive approach is clearly needed. In this discussion of district policy, I think we should just all remember that no staff member should ever be left to decide how to handle residency issues on a case-by-case basis. That's how these things happen. That is why policy is needed. All staff members should be able to do their jobs with the confidence that the procedure they're following has been reviewed by the board, has been approved, and is public knowledge, and that those procedures treat all families fairly. I hope that starting tonight, we can make that happen, and I believe we can. In closing, I will just note a few things about the discussion so far. The reason you see CSBA's recommendation that you only require two forms of residency, and this is in response to Matt's suggestion that you stick with three, is because I believe Assembly Bill 207 was drafted, and it was really to address the situation in which the requirements for proving residency are overburdensome. And so I suggest that you take a look at Assembly Bill 207 because it's recent, more recent legislation, and it does specify what you can and cannot require. I believe that the Almane's High School District is actually out of compliance. I'm not a lawyer, but some of you are, and so I presume you'll be able to make that determination. Assembly Bill 207 also addresses alternative living situations, and much of that legislation was drafted specifically to address homeless children and, you know, kids who are on the run, who may want to go to school but cannot prove, provide residency because they don't have an official place of residence, they're sleeping on a park bench or something like that. You know, that's probably not a common occurrence in Arinda, but it could be, and you do have to be careful because you're subject to that education code, that you include those students should they happen to end up in the Arinda district. Anyway, that's really all I have to say. I really want to thank you all again for your discussion. Thank you to those of you who have reached out to me personally and begun a more constructive discussion of how we can all move forward and make this district, keep this district the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comments on this item?
It can be ed code languages. I think Almane's regulation does comply with the ed code. Lafayette's, I'm not sure about, because I think they do require the three with the different category, and I'm not sure if they're compliant, but I think Almane's language is different than ours, and it's more in compliance. It's straight out of the ed code, actually.
So, so I have an idea. In fact, it's a suggestion. I'd like to see if we could get the board to agree to form a subcommittee of Jason and Julie. I'd like them to take this up, and I'd like you to involve legal counsel in the review of what you come up with, and then bring it back to the board.
Can I ask just, Joe, if we were to require the annual checks, what kind, you know, how would that pan out on the staff side of these? I mean, I'm assuming it's more school site staff rather than district office, but I'm not sure exactly how that all would play out and what additional burden we'd be adding.
Yeah. The district leadership team, which is all of our managers' principles in Arinda, has discussed this more than once over the last several years about whether or not to do that and the impacts will be. That has been one of the concerns, I think, two that were sort of referenced here tonight, one being the impact that that has on parents to do that annually. So that's a concern. The other has been the impact to have the staff to do that, which we currently, we don't really have enough to be able to handle. I have to add more time in to do it. So, specifically what that is, it's been some time since we've talked about it, so I don't know the specifics of it. We have to do some more research on it, but there would be some type of impact on the office staff at the school sites, particularly. I can ask or read, or anything else on that in my country.
Well, it would seem...
Hold on one sec, Carol. The ring's good.
It has been brought up at OAS as a concern. They were the school site that brought it forward, that we'd like to see something renewed, not necessarily renewed, but to have the registration process.
So you're saying that OAS would like to see the registration process firmed up?
Yes.
Julie, I'm just trying to remember when the window opens at, for example, Miramani bringing our documentation. Is it 10 days before school starts, two weeks before? Is it ten days before school starts, two weeks before school starts?
No, it's in August. Yeah, so once the school opens, it's like again after, so probably mid-August.
Yeah. Where, is it two weeks, one week?
Like two, two weeks.
At least two weeks, could be three weeks. It's not one week because it's, you know, they have the sports, you know, track and whatever, football practice and it's at the end of that, but well before school starts. But I mean, there's like a three-week window.
Yeah, it's too easy to get back from, from back school.
Yeah. But speaking of the high school, I mean, they, I've always felt like they had more of a focus on this residency issue because of, because of Los Lomas and adjoining districts there, which, you know, it felt like we are under less stress about people from outside of the district coming into Arinda than they are, you know, high school students wanting to not be in Mount Dalvo but be in Algonias. But that, you know, that's just a comment.
What I've seen is, I've seen parents try and move out of the district after eighth grade with the assumption that they'd be able to automatically send their kids to the high school. I know two families that are renting right now because for some reason they thought they'd be able to, in fact, in fact, one of them wants the interdistrict transfer from El Sobrante into our district and then they assumed that that would automatically qualify them for the high school district.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the common things that people think.
They don't know the difference.
They don't realize they're two separate districts.
So are you guys comfortable with forming a subcommittee of the board of Jason and Julie?
Well, I, Jason and Julie comfortable with it. Well, it sounds great to have two board members dive in, but I just want to say, you know, we were, as I mentioned before, not aware of this and that, you know, it has been very vocal. So are they, I would like them to come back and check back in with us like next month, maybe. I don't, I don't want to not hear about it again for two or three months.
You know, I think it would be, I mean, given my notes and your notes, I think it'd be probably pretty easy to sit down and just draft a new policy.
And then bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, next month.
For discussion, not for action.
For discussion.
For discussion because it'll be provisioned.
But even if you, even if they haven't come to a conclusion by next month, I would love to hear their progress report as opposed to saying, oh, well, they're not ready yet, it'll be March. I just want to say that out front. Thank you.
Matt, can I ask one more question for a little guidance from, from staff perspective? Because I do think there's a balancing act, Julie was referring to it, when you write a policy or a regulation, there's an impulse to write more and more, but the more and more you write, the more and more you may create unintended consequences and too much.
Less is better.
Sometimes less is better. So, you know, I don't know if in our process or maybe in the next open board meeting, we can talk about that with specific examples, but is there an opening comment, Joe, you'd like to make in terms of specificity of the policy, what you think staff, would you find beneficial to staff?
I don't think so at this time. I think, I mean, you have basically surfaced it, which is the unintended consequences of the more specific you get, the more the tighter ends of doing things. I think it's.
Well, one other thing in our, in our packet is two things, the policy and the administrative regulation. Are you going to be looking at both?
Yes.
Yes.
Although the policy is very.
The policy is very short. I know, but it does have the first line as a good statement about having the opportunity for our students to use their educational services. Good. And if we have, Matt, if we come, if we have any thoughts that we want, how, what do we do, send it to Joe?
I'll steal it.
Okay, and then he would forward it to them. Okay, if we have any comments between now and next month.
I would like to see our policy so that we don't have diversity and that we do not discriminate based on diversity.
Yeah, I would think it was already in there.
Some policy somewhere.
But let's make sure it's in there. That's a good point.
Thank you. We have one more comment. Nicole Radlo?
Hi, I'm Nicole Radlo. I'm the OAS Parents Club Chair and also have a incoming freshman, Emamonte. I would just like to say, please don't make us do it every year, but maybe something kindergarten third, fifth, or third, sixth, or something like that. Because I do think more, you know, you can't just go K through A and show your residency yet. I think that's where you get in trouble, but I think it doesn't have to be every year. So I'd just like to bring this back to the parents out here who have to provide their tax return.
Get used to it.
Long way there, but four years versus twelve would be better. Thank you.
We could do quarterly every year.
Charles Shannon?
Charles Shannon, we made president. To that comment you just made, Carol, like one other, we've enumerated groups included as well. I wouldn't like sexual orientation to be included in that as well.
I would too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our first action item, action item issued in 2013, 2014, manual financial audits. Colleen Tokinaga, Lorraine, you can introduce?
I'll introduce. So our OUSB independent audit report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, and this is by our certified public health and colleague, Colleen Tokinaga, annual spirit. We're back for the fourth report. Meeting board members, superintendent, Lorraine Carroll, the district of Business Services. And my name is Colleen Tokinaga, I represent, Colleen Tokinaga. This is my second year serving as your auditor and this audit covers fiscal year end June 30, 2014. For those of you who are not familiar with the audit process, we, we come and visit Lorraine and her staff twice a year during the interface. We could do a lot of internal controls, a lot of testing, selecting samples, do some steps in the state compliance guide that's issued by the state controller. There's listed steps that need to be reviewed and to make sure that they are implemented and are working properly. So we visit, we visit the district for approximately three days, four days sometimes during the year and we come back at final season, which is typically in the fall, and we review the un-audited financial statements of the district. So we receive the trial downs electronically and then we convert that into financial statements. And if there are any adjustments that we need to make, we discuss that with them, with Lorraine. And, but there, you know, in this particular year, there, there were no adjustments. And so I'm just going to briefly go through the audit report. In the table of contents, the audit report is basically broken up into five major segments. There's a financial section, the required supplementary information, supplementary information, independent audit, independent auditors' reports, and then schedule of findings and question costs. So the primary purpose of our, or objective of, of an audit is to render an opinion on the financial statements of the district, whether or not they are free of material misstatements. So that's found in page two in the independent auditor's report. So in the financial section, it's basically the meat of the entire audit report. This is where you're going to find the management discussion and analysis, the government-wide financial statements, the government-funded financial statement, and the notes and disclosures that are required for each of these audits. So consistently with the past, the district receives a qualified opinion because it has legally component, separate component units, which are essentially community organizations that provide a lot of financial support for the district, which is actually very impressive. But because they do not issue financial statements and henceforth, we cannot audit them, we have to issue a qualified opinion. But other than that, if you look on the unmodified opinion paragraph on page three, it essentially says, except for the effects of omitting the discreetly presented component units, the financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of, et cetera, of Arinda Union School District as of June 30, 2014. So that is the main auditor's report in, in this entire package. Following that is the management discussion and analysis, and this is the district's opportunity to provide highlights in their own words, what has occurred, the financial highlights of 2013, 14. So we provide a template which can be customized, which Lorraine can use in order to present this MDMA portion. After that, page 16 is, page 16 and 17 is the government-wide financial statements. And so there is a requirement that all the governmental funds are combined into financial, into one financial statement. One is the statement of net position, which is essentially a balance sheet, and the statement of activities. So this is the combined of financial statements of the general fund, capital facilities fund, et cetera. So those are the government-wide financial statements. And the government, the separate governmental funds are also presented. So on page 18, we show the, the major funds. Based on our calculations, we present first the major funds and then the non-major funds are shown with the supplementary information in the back of the audit report. So in this case, the general fund and the capital facilities fund, capital projects, special reserve fund are all major funds. So that's the main components of the financial section. And then also I wanted to take you to page 28, which is, excuse me, which are the notes to the financial statements. So this provides a little bit more information, more detail on the numbers and the descriptions that you're seeing on the financial statements. So the notes give a little bit more background on the district, some definitions for the different types of funds, the purposes of the funds, the type of accounting that's used, significant accounting policies. And the example that I provided, or that I wanted to look at, excuse me, to show a little bit more detail is, for instance, the, on page 42, there's a note three titled receivables. So when you see the accounts receivable in the government-wide funds, this is the breakdown of that total. So it shows what is receivables from categorical A and other types of, of receivable. And also another area that most auditors look at is the long-term obligations on page 44. And we have the components of that as well. So we have the compensated absence, which is basically the vacation accrual as of June 30, 2014, and the general obligation bonds, and OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits obligation. So, so the notes did provide more detail, more definitions, more description, because sometimes the numbers are really meaningless without, without that extra information. Okay. And on page 53, this is where we discuss furthermore, the legally separate component units, which are the voluntary public contribution. So we have a total for the year that the district has received of 2013, 14, which is why we, it, it had to be disclosed in discussion. In the required supplementary section, we present the adopted budget versus the final figures for the year to show the variances. This is done every year. And then we also talked to Lorraine about the major, if there are material variances, the reason for them, there's usually a very straightforward explanation for those variances when, at times we can figure those out ourselves. In the supplementary information, so essentially what the supplementary information is, is just information that is provided outside of the basic financial statements. So here we have, on page 58, the schedule of federal expenditures, of federal awards. So we let the federal funding that the district has received. And if the total expenditures exceeded, was 500,000 or more, we would have to have done a single audit, but in this case, and as in the past, it has been under 500,000. And on page 60 is the average daily attendance, and this is taken from the P2 that is submitted in the spring. We recalculate these numbers to make sure that the ADA is reported properly. So this is essentially the, the summary of the P2 and the annual reports. So on page 63 is the schedule of financial trends and analysis. So kind of a year-to-year look at the trends in the district. And essentially what we're looking for here is whether or not the district is, is maintaining reserves under the reserve requirements. So in, for a district of this size, the, the reserve requirement is three percent. And, and that is the case here. As a matter of fact, if you look at available reserves as a percentage of total outgoes in 2000, year-end, year-ending 2000, June 30, 2014, it's almost 22 percent. Okay, so after, so the, so the non-major funds are presented. There's really not a lot of funds in the district, but there's a bond interest and redemption fund on page 66, so you'll see the, the balance sheet for that, as well as the revenues and expenditures on page 67. So one thing I wanted to point out, since we issued this audit report, is that we have corrected page 64, which is the schedule of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for measure A and measure B parcel tax. The figures that we originally got included a line item that said it was a contribution from an unrestricted resource when actually it was, it was a transfer out. So it shouldn't have reduced the parcel tax proceeds. So this is a supplementary schedule. It doesn't affect any of the other reports or opinions in, in the audit. So if, the correction here would be to simply replace this page and provide you with the correct parcel tax proceeds.
These numbers aren't reflected anywhere else in the document?
No, no, they're not reflected.
Do you know the actual number?
Yes, we do. So the, so the total should be 3.3 million 688,509. Measure A is 2 million 789,933 parcel tax proceeds and measure B is 898,576. And I can read them to you or I had emailed Lorraine a copy of that revised page so you can just replace that on the audit report. But apologies for that, but sometimes when you're reading the report, it comes, you know.
Can I have the total one more time?
Sure. I'm sorry?
The total one more time?
Oh, 3 million 688,509.
Thank you.
That makes me rush down here.
Yes, I'm glad it does. We tend to err on the side of being conservative. I was a little conservative, but yeah. So I think next year we'll know that, that what that really means is it was utilized for other salaries rather than, or other expenses. Are there any questions, comments?
Can I just take the board, since it's first meeting for two board members, if you go to the last section, the schedule of findings and question costs?
Oh.
If you go to page 77?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should.
Will you just talk to them about findings?
Yes. So findings, so there's various types of findings. So what a finding is, is that we use auditor judgment. If there is an issue where we see something that is repetitive, say for instance with dispersments, when vendors are being chased. So we look at a sample, depending on how many were, how many checks were written during the year, we look at a sample to see, are the the year, we look at a sample to see, are the internal controls of the district being followed? So if there is an issue that's being repeated, and we see that there, you know, that somehow internal controls need to be strengthened in that area, we will make it a recommendation or put it as a finding. So a finding is a little bit more to bring the attention to the matter for the, for the manager, or for Lorene, and also for the board. But in this case, you know, we did not have any findings. You know, typically the first year or two of auditing a district is also a learning curve for us, so we're, we're trying to understand how internal controls are on and what the procedures are, because every district is different. There really isn't some template that everybody follows. But, and we're looking at, you know, if there is an issue, if it was an isolated incident, for instance, or if there are other measures that mitigate that particular issue.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have findings, or any findings. It's a good thing. I remember we had some on like attendance, making sure we're keeping track of attendance and things like that.
And there are some findings where we can't use auditor judgment. It's kind of black and white, because the state says, well, if you find this, you have to put it as a finding. So there are some situations when we can't, you know, provide our own judgment.
So I do have a couple of questions. One of them is on, about the parcel tax, so that's page 64, where it shows expenditures. You've got salaries, benefits listed, and then $78 books and supplies. In your process of doing this, do you actually, I mean, I know the parcel tax committee that we have is supposed to assure that our parcel tax is spent according to ballot language, but do you also do that? In other words, I was just sort of surprised that the expenditures are only salaries and benefits, and there's not more on anything else. And I was just wondering, do you even look at that, or are you just verifying the numbers?
No, we actually do look at that. There is a, the report that I was referring to earlier, where we had the different numbers, it has a detail of the revenue and the expenditure. So it does show teacher payments, and we check, we select quite a few of them actually, and we, we make sure that they are spent according to their purpose, the parcel tax.
The parcel tax language.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then another question on a different page, 61, where you're talking about instructional time?
Yes.
Since we have this conversation about kindergarten hours, I just kind of zeroed in on that. And I saw that in the first column, of course, that's 1986-87, it's got minute requirements, then adjusted and reduced, and then 13-14 actual minutes. So I was curious, do you know why it was reduced in that year? And then when it says that it's all fine, you know, well, first of all, one question at a time. Why, do you know why it was reduced, the second column?
You know, it's not actually reduced. What that is, is, well, it is reduced. Let me back up a little bit. But the 1986-87 minutes requirements has always been, you know, has been there since that code was, that code was revised in 86-87. The reduce is based on reduced calendar days. So what the state did was, for a few years, is that if you did not meet the 180 calendar days, there is a way to get, to still be in compliance under the reduced minutes for 1986-87. So we present that for informational purposes, that that can also be met if, for instance, the traditional calendar days was 175 versus 180. So then, because if you go by, if you had only 175 days, there would be no way that we could meet the 80, the full 86-87 minutes. So the state basically allowed 86 and 87 to be reduced for the reduced, for the allowable reduced number of calendar days.
Okay.
I don't know if that was clear, but.
Yeah, I sort of understand what you mean now. And it seems like it was a few years ago that Governor announced that you'd have fewer days if, you know, it was up to the school district based on the lack of funding or something. So Joe, I just have a question for you. Someone told me the other day that our kindergarten hours may, what, aren't enough, maybe that's not about minutes. I'm trying to remember what they said, because it sounded like they were saying, we don't have enough minutes. But I think they were saying, we don't have enough minutes to do the state standards or something like that, which is a whole different thing, right? So that's, and requirement for kindergarten minutes is what we have here, 13-14, then 37,800 or whatever. So that's three and a half hours, is it? Or is it just the total number of minutes?
That is a total number of minutes. So we calculate instructional minutes by grade. So we select a couple of elementary schools, and we look at the ballot schedule, and we compute that based on the number of calendars. So we actually go through the calendar and count to see how many instructional days are in the calendar. So those actual minutes are based on recalculating those figures.
Okay. Okay. And then I have one more question, which was the page of OPEB.
Okay.
I lost my place on.
Is it page 45?
Well, let's see. No, I was thinking I was looking page 56, that I, in the early part.
Okay.
Is that right? Now, I don't think this, it must be in different places. I saw one that it said, maybe this was it, it seemed like the liability, it was talking about your liability.
Okay.
And that's, is that on page 56?
Maybe on page 48, there's actually a computation of the net OPEB obligation for the end of the year at the top of the page. It cut off at the bottom, so that, that computation is on the top of page 48.
Well, I was just going to ask you to kind of explain that. It appears that it's on several different pages, and since we have that later on our agenda, it just seemed like the amount I was looking at a few minutes ago wasn't as much as I, as we had talked about in the past with our OPEB liability. But this is, I understand this is just for one year?
Yes.
This year, okay. So what you have in here is the liability, is the liability for one year? Can you kind of explain what it is?
Yes, so this is the accumulated liability for OPEB, not just one year. So the, what you see at the year end.
Wait, which page are you on that?
Page 48, at the top of the page.
Okay.
Okay. So this is the format that's required as far as how to present the, the ending net OPEB obligation for the year. So the, the district receives an actuarial report, an OPEB actuarial report, in which we get what's called an annual required contribution. So this is the accrual that we have to report every year. And I believe the district gets a new actuarial every two or three years. So that ARC is accrued, and then there are some interests that we have to compute based on the actuarial, it goes to an interest rate on the beginning OPEB obligation. So as of July 1, 2013, we carry over the ending balance from the previous year. And then we add the ARC, and then the interest. And any contributions that the district has made towards OPEB is deducted. So that's, so the net increase in net OPEB obligation, that's the net increase for the year for 13-14. And then the ending is just, is the accumulated OPEB obligation from prior years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions in the board?
Well, I just want to point out just, especially to new members, that that 5.2 million net OPEB obligation as of June 2014. In 2013, it was 4.2, which is showing there. 2012, 3.2, 2011, 2.5, you can see where this is going. 2010, 1.7, 2009, 150,000, so 1 million every year that's just adding on, which is one of the reasons why we kind of got to the OPEB trust account that we created, but just to sort of, as an informational thing, I always go back and look at these things historically, and I'm always not too old for that numbers.
Thank you.
I do have a question on page 47.
Okay.
Which is in our audit every year, the duration of benefits to age 66, to age 65, 65. But we provide a lifetime benefit, so I'm always curious why it says that, and that there's a reason.
Oh, this is, this is taken directly from the language in the actuarial.
Yeah. Because it's the contract language. So why is that imminent? Is that, that doesn't seem accurate, I guess.
This is the language that's in our collective bargaining agreements. But because we're in the CalPERS hub benefit program, it has language that supervises.
Any questions in the board? Any comments in the audience this time? Any further questions in the board?
Thank you for clarifying the parcel tax, because that really startled me.
No worries. Yesterday, it was very good. Yeah, it's just a matter of reading that report, but yeah, so it's supplementary.
It makes me feel much better.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So this item is on for action. I'll accept a motion to approve.
I second it.
Jason, you made the motion?
Yes.
Great. So we have a motion and a second to approve the 2013-2014 annual financial audit report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? unanimous?
Can we get a copy of that replacement page?
Yeah, maybe we'll load in the minutes as amended with the replacement page.
Thank you. Item B, the 2013-2014 tentative bargaining agreement between the OUSD and the Arinda Education Association, Lorene?
So on December 1, the Arinda Unions School District and the Arinda Education Association reached a tentative agreement with the school year 2013-14. A breakdown of the tentative agreement, as well as the Contra Costa County Office of Education's response to the settlement disclosure provided within the board package. The agreement includes language that provides both one-time and ongoing changes to salary and benefits. The one-time items are as follows. If by effective July 1, 2014, through November 30, 2014 only, the district would agree to increase the medical benefit cap by $285 per month per full-time equivalency. The parties also agree that all bargaining unit members will receive a one-time off-the-salary schedule stipend of $3,475 per full-time employee. The one-time off-the-salary schedule stipend will be prorated for part-time employees based on their FTE. The ongoing items include a 3% salary increase applied to all steps of the 2012-13 certificated salary schedule retroactive to October 7, 2013, as well an increase in the medical benefit cap of $485 per month per full-time equivalency would be effective December 1, 2014. Contract language would be added, providing elementary enrichment specialists who teach grades 1 through 5 with release time for specific activities. The particulars associated with this release time are outlined within the agreement. There are two side letters attached to the tentative agreement, one which includes language pertaining to prep time and the other to staff meetings. The total cost of the settlement is 1.1 million 400,558 dollars and 88 cents, which will be funded using unrestricted general fund growth dollars and undesigned and unrestricted one-time dollars. It is recommended that the board approve the 2013-14 tentative agreement between the Arinda Education Association and the Arinda Unions School District. Is this on?
Any questions in the board?
I would like to, number one, I'd like to thank the teachers for their diligence. And the other thing I want to say is, teachers, I've been on the board for six years, and you have been with us through horrible state budgetary times. And we charge you with our precious little beans, and you guys do a great job with them. And the cuts that were made five, five and six years ago were really painful for the board, and I know they were also really painful for district staff. And nobody took pleasure in our efforts to keep our budget balanced and the spirit of keeping the cuts as far away from the students as possible. And it's just, it's with great, I thank the teachers, not, I want to thank district staff for all your hard work. It's been a long process. You've, you've got two boards you've had to work with over this process, and, and I just, as an individual board member, I'm just really proud to be able to have our budget in a position where we're able to, to compensate the teachers fairly, and hopefully the teachers, I want them to know how much we value them, their efforts, their patience over this long haul, and I'm just really proud of the, of what we've got here to vote on tonight. It's a really, it's a result of hard work. I think it's very fair. I think it really represents my values as far as how much I value our teachers. Anything else from the board?
I want to agree with you, Matt. It was a long haul, I know, working us out, and thank you for everyone's patience, both the teachers and the administration, and I'm glad we have an agreement.
Any comments from the public on this item? Charles?
Charles Shannon, OEA president, sorry for my voice, I'm a bit sick. I want to say that during the hard economic times after 2005, we worked with the district. We knew that it was really unpredictable how and when the state would, would fund the school district. We got through those years. Through that time, we were, we were promised that when times got better, that the district would reward teachers for the sacrifices. And we really worked hard. I want to acknowledge the two teams, both the district team and OEA's team. We hung in there. There were times when it wasn't easy, but we all wanted to make sure that we did the best for teachers, not just the majority. You can see that the benefit cap's not going to benefit all of us, but we really believed that there was a significant impact on families. And so, you know, we did what was right. And I want to acknowledge my team, they're amazing. We were unlike those who benefited in those minority groups, yet we represented them. And I think that was a true testament to who we are as people, we do what's right. Lorene too, in conversations with her, acknowledged that, and we acknowledged in her that that is important to her as well, to really, you know, think about what's right. And this woman here is just such a just person, and I appreciate her integrity. And I, and I do appreciate the integrity that was shown amongst the two teams through the process. So thank you, board, for coming through with your word. We really appreciate it. And we appreciate the work that we do for our students and for our families here at Arinda. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Any other comment from the public? Anything else from the board on this item? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the 2013-14 tentative bargaining agreement with OEA, OUSD, and OEA.
I second it.
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more item on for action tonight. Item C, action items, other post-retirement liability options. Marie?
So the board authorized the creation of an irrevocable trust at the November Board of Trustees meeting. The trust is managed by CalPERS, and the program is called the California Employers Retirement Benefit Trust, or CERT. The final phase of setting up the irrevocable trust is making an asset allocation strategy selection. There are three separate strategies referred to, Strategy One, Two, and Three. Levels of expected return and risk vary among the strategies. Employers that seek higher investment returns and are able to accept greater risk and tolerate more fluctuation in returns may wish to consider Strategy One. This is the strategy that the Okalawis Union High School District has elected to participate in. Employers who seek moderate approach to investing may consider Strategy Two. And employers who seek greater stability of value in exchange for lower investment returns may consider Strategy Three. A breakdown of each of the strategies along with the expected long-term rate of returns provided in the packet. All CERT strategies are shared. They all share the same public market asset classes. The allocation strategies differ only to the extent to which they participate in each of the asset classes. It's necessary for the district to make a selection of strategy in order to complete the process of establishing the irrevocable trust. And this is an action item on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions for Lorene from the board?
Can you refresh my memory about how much we invested?
The board agreed to set aside, I'll just say big numbers because I don't have the memories. I think it was four hundred and fifty-nine thousand of the current pay-as-you-go amount. And then next year's projected OPEB liability of, I think it was five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So it was close to a million dollars has been set aside for the irrevocable trust.
So Lorene, could you say a little more about the three different strategy options that are before us? In terms of if we pick Strategy One versus Strategy Two versus Strategy Three?
The percentages of the investments are included in the board package on page one seventy-six. It shows the breakdown of how each of the strategies is invested in the assets. So you can see that Strategy One, fifty-seven percent, is in global equities. Where Strategy Three only has twenty-four percent in global equities. So all of the strategies are invested in the same asset classifications. It's just they vary on the percentage of the money that is allocated into each of them. So the more aggressive strategy is Strategy One, which is the one that Okalawis is participating in, where we saw the rate of return over that four-year period. I think on the PowerPoint presentation that they showed, it was a thirty-six percent rate of return over that four-year period.
Has Lafayette moved forward in there?
No, they have not. Well, I don't know in their most recent board meeting, but as of November, their November board meeting, they did not take action to establish the trust yet. But they are looking at CalPERS.
So for example, if we invested in Strategy One, that says seven point two eight percent, would both of those dollar amounts be, like after a year, you've got seven point two eight percent more on both of those dollar amounts that you mentioned? The current year and the, current year and next year?
Correct, because the full amount would be invested with the initial deposit. We plan to withdraw the pay-as-you-go amount on a monthly basis to cover the pay-as-you-go premium. So a majority of the time, the full million dollars will be in there, and then we will draw against it for the retirement payment as we go.
Okay, and then correspondingly, if you picked Strategy Two or Three, you've just got the slightly lesser percentages.
Correct.
But theoretically, what some of them may be, you know, I'm trying to think about what would be the difference. There's obviously differences in what the investments are in, in terms of.
So one's going to be more, number one's going to be more volatile, number three should be always volatile.
Okay. Then can you, can you change it, like after one year? Can you change it, or once we decide, is it?
We can elect to change the strategy.
Each year?
Because like 401K, we could change it with new payments going forward? Or is there, are there fees involved to reallocation of?
It's my understanding we can change it at any time that we direct the trust to change the strategy.
Do you value the recommendation here? I don't, I do not recognize it.
Did I miss something?
Okay.
I'm not a risk taker, but.
I'm a little surprised Okalawis went with number one.
But in seeing the interest that they are earning and the proceeds that they're receiving, we would have at least one year's worth of our pay-as-you-go sitting in that account, earning the interest. So I would feel comfortable with Strategy One because we're not having to draw the complete amount out each, each year. We would have a set amount going forward at this point.
And the numbers you highlighted to us in the financial statement, you know, it's a big, it's a big catch-up.
Yeah, and if you can change it, it doesn't seem like there's any downside to going for the most interest.
Well, as I've always said, it's kind of needs to go hand in hand with changing our one-time benefits, which is totally a plain catch-up.
You know, I know, Jason, that you're fond of saying there will be another recession. And with that in mind, I sat down and talked with our own personal finance guy about this. And he felt that all three strategies were fairly conservative. And he said, three is just way too conservative, you don't want to go with that. I don't want to lose any of the district's money. But he sort of convinced me that one would be okay. Yeah. I mean, I would have naturally, myself.
Oh, you do?
I would have.
I really would have.
Yeah, and we have to make the choice with the understanding that, you know, that forty-six sounds great four years from now in the next great recession, or whenever that may be, we may see negative number. And that's just like what happens with the 401Ks. There's weight to the decision. And it's important to recognize that.
But we could change it.
But we could change it.
I mean, we're going, you know.
That's right.
We can change it at any time. It's not like a recession is going to happen overnight, and we're not going to be.
Not noticed.
Even aware that it's coming. Yeah. And I consider Okalawis pretty conservative myself, so if they went with one, I, you know.
And I was about to say risk figures.
Yeah, that says a lot to me, and I think they watch their dollars really well. I'm influenced by that.
Any comments from the public on this item? Charles?
I'm just curious what the superintendent thinks, if he has actually reached out to somebody that, you know, this is, who's an expert in this area. I mean, I've heard somebody say they checked in with their financial advisor, another person said Okalawis is pretty conservative, you know? So if they're doing number one, then we should. I mean, I don't want to just throw a dart at the board. I would think that the district did their homework. You know, we heard from Lorene that she thinks right now maybe go with Strategy One. But I haven't heard from the superintendent, and I'm really curious what he has found out.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I, you know, I got a chance to dig around a little bit as well and have conversations with people. And I also, I had no idea where you guys were going to land on this thing, so I'm heartened that you guys ended up on Strategy One, because I thought I was going to be the outlier maverick. So I do, I also agree that I think Strategy One is also relatively conservative, and I'm comfortable putting dollars in the Strategy One. So seems like we have consensus? That's cool. Okay. This is, this item's on for action. Confirm motion?
I move that we approve the Strategy One asset allocation on our OPEB liability trust account.
Hold on a second, Pat.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Can I ask you, Ms. Kathy? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to discussion item A. Kathy Marshall was supposed to present this item, but unfortunately, she's ill, so I've asked Dr. Jackanett to present the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen draft school year calendar.
Thank you. I'm sorry that Kathy couldn't be here this evening, but we understand she, like, any of us all, I'm feeling a little bit of this going around. She's been the point person on the calendar and has done all of the meetings with various groups and discussions and proposals on this. So I'll do the best that I can to summarize what she has here. And if there, if there are any questions, this is just on for discussion at this point. There's no action, so we'll be bringing it back anyway, and we can provide any additional information to you if that's necessary. So the leadership team and curriculum committees reviewed the approved Okalawis calendar for two fifteen, sixteen, and the Arindas current calendar. And the starting date, holidays, and staff development days were all reviewed. So a couple of things to keep in mind about the differences, the Okalawis district has a hundred and eighty-six day calendar, and Arindas are one eighty-four. So Okalawis has a couple of additional staff development days than we do. The committee charted several options for staff development days to align with the days when the Okalawis school district was not in session. Okalawis students are not in school on September eighteenth, October twelfth, January twenty-fifth, and March seventh. The first day of school for Okalawis is Monday, August twenty-fourth, and in the proposal you're seeing Wednesday for us. And the last day of school for Okalawis is June tenth, and the proposal has the same for us. The curriculum committee gathered input from teachers at their sites during the month of November. This recommended draft calendar that Kathy has prepared reflects this input. And the recommended starting date, staff development days, and elementary conference days, four fifty and sixteen are outlined in the agenda bill. So that's kind of the summary of it, and I think you'll want to have an opportunity to discuss it.
So just to give a little bit of context for two new board members, we work, we work really closely with the Okalawis High School District, and that's just historical. When you don't work closely with the high school district and you've got kids in both districts, bad things happen. And you hear it loud and clear from our stakeholder groups. So that has a lot to do with how we drive our decisions. And then, Dr. Jackanett, could you share what other groups are involved in taking a look at it? In other words, what's the process? Can you just briefly go through the process again, and?
So in our timeline, the review of this process, the leadership team took a look at the proposal and provided comments in October, the curriculum committee, excuse me, on October twenty-second. There was some teacher input at the various sites between October and November, and then the OIS curriculum committee members in December. The leadership team again looked at it in December third. The curriculum committee looked at between December seventeenth and January sixth.
And then can you tell us who, what comprises the curriculum committee?
It's representatives of the teachers group from across the district at the school sites and administrative, a couple of administrative representatives.
And leadership team is principals, the end supervisor, the director, making the.
All of them, administration.
So discussion on the board?
Yes, I would like to first raise the issue of the first day of school. I believe that this year, it was one day different between OUSD and Okalawis, but I could be wrong. I know it wasn't the same day. And I wonder how that works, and I think that's a really important topic because we don't want kids not coming to school because they're still on vacation because they are. No, it actually would be the other way around. The high school, I think you said the high school was going to start at the twenty-fourth, Monday, and we're going to start Wednesday.
So Sarah, let me clarify. That's just staff.
Staff, the high school.
The students start the same day.
Oh, they do.
I think the high school, the high school this year started on Monday.
But I'm talking about this year.
This year, I thought they were still starting. I thought coming up, they were going to start on Monday again.
Oh, I thought it was Wednesday.
I'm not sure.
So wait, this year.
This year, they did start on Monday. High school.
The high school, though we didn't start.
Though we didn't.
And so we probably benefited, we were probably fine, but I would like to know. Did, I guess, we ended up, well, I mean, that to me is like one of the most important issues of this calendar. You know, the calendars always used to be very much aligned in terms of start and end. And I don't know about professional development days.
It seems like last year, the high school district decided to start on a Monday, and we never seemed to want to start and have that whole week.
Yeah, we didn't want to start on a Monday, so we didn't.
I mean, they, I don't know why they switched, but.
Okay, so for this year, what we have here is it says we would start on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. So which day did the high school start in? Because I looked down Monday, but I think Matt was just saying that's for the.
I'm pulling up the fifteen, sixteen calendar right now. And it does show Monday, August twenty-fourth is shaded in gray, and that shows the first day of school. So you're correct.
For the Okalawis?
Okalawis. Monday, August twenty-fourth, first day of school.
And so, yeah, we both, oh, they have a longer day. They have a hundred and eighty-six days. We have a.
Well, they have a hundred and eighty-six days for their staff.
For their staff, okay. Do we have the same number of days of school?
Yes.
Twenty?
Yes. Okay. So if they start two days earlier, that means we have.
Because Joe said they have two other staff development days that are spread throughout the year.
That we don't have.
That we don't have. We have two Mondays.
Okay. So was, so the bottom line, Joe, was there any days where we had school for OUSD that Okalawis didn't? Or that there, was there any impact on enrollment at all? This, the current year? This fall or?
Yes, I believe I'll ask Lorene to comment on that.
On the October day, I think that was the staff development day that Okalawis had, and we didn't. And there was, we did receive a.
And what, October, what?
Was that during our conference week?
So I think it's, I think Okalawis was out on, that's our concept, but also Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
I think they have a staff development day on Columbus Day.
Okay. All right, well, one day isn't too bad. Okay, and then, yeah, well, the only other question I have right now is how is the conference week that we have here in October compared to last year? Is this the same week of the, because I remember last year, there was a lot of discussion about what week conference week was and how far into the school year it was.
That was a question that I had, too, that it has a staff development day on the same day that parent conferences begin. And maybe I just don't understand the process.
I think we should do one at a time, so.
Yeah, take service.
So I think we're on the same schedule for parent conferences.
Okay, and was that, that worked all right last year?
Well, it's being recommended.
Being recommended with teachers involved, and you get so theoretically. Being recommended, the teachers evolved, you get the, so theoretically, it must be okay, they were fine by us, and but I guess we are.
We're just providing Kathy's recommendation after doing those meetings.
Right, okay, understood, thank you.
Okay, now what did we address with, was it Carol?
Yeah, it's Carol. So your specific question on the staff development day and what, the first day of conference week?
Yeah, October twelfth, they have both staff development and parent conferences.
The middle school, because conferences are only at large schools.
Ah, that's the answer.
So October twelfth, staff development.
Ah, okay.
Middle school.
Okay, thank you.
So they don't have classes that day, or else?
Minimum.
It's a minimum day.
So they have staff development the afternoon?
New person ignorant here. No, I was, I thought you were talking about Akalani's. Well, I mean, the only way to avoid that with the extra staff development days is that if we did start on Monday, I guess, but I don't think there's ever been that much desire to have the kids, you know, go to this, so that whole week, you know, the whole week and nothing happened, because they seem kind of, the gentler start to this school year would be. Yeah, you're right, we probably do lose some students on these days.
The professional enrollment day.
I don't understand what day you're saying we're losing students.
I guess the first day, the, like, the October twelfth or whatever, Columbus Day, that the high school kids have off.
Good.
If we started early and took those days off.
There's another day during the year, that's probably also a Monday, that maybe lose people on a three-day weekend.
Well, wait, so we have, we have a day off, or we don't have a day off? October twelfth.
Yeah, that's the first day of conference day.
So we don't have it off?
Yeah.
But does the high school?
It is, yeah, they, that was one of their staff development.
Well, I think that's one of the days I circled when Joe mentioned the high school development days.
They're not in school on October twelfth.
Actually, it's, you know, probably one issue for middle school. If we didn't have that day of school and it's conference week, then would you be able to do all the conferences in four days instead of five days? We probably wouldn't be happy with that. Okay. Well, then maybe we better lead it the way it is.
Any more discussion from the board on this?
I'd like to hear from the audience.
Comments from the public on this item?
Charles Shannery, president, I was just noticing that you don't have anything where the trimester ends for elementary in November. The T's missing, so we'll, we'll want to make sure to have that in there for parents.
And when?
Friday the twentieth? I'm guessing?
No, it seems like it would be the sixteenth.
Well, they always get their reports right before.
Staff will get it.
Right?
Staff will get that.
I just wanted to make sure it got on there.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public on this item? Any further discussion on this board? Okay, that item was on for discussion over here. We're on to board reports, these are opportunities for board members to give a brief report on their activities from the prior weeks.
I will start with CSBA. I just want to thank the entire board, especially our new board members, for their commitment to becoming great members of the board by spending so much time at CSBA Conference. I know you both did new board member orientations, which is a whole day process, and then attended tons of functions. I know both Julie, Sarah, and I also attended full-day conferences, and I just, I appreciate everybody's commitment to this board, to be the best board member possible. What's striking to me is how many boards don't have, certainly don't have unanimity. We're really unique in that, in that way that we've all, and it's been the culture on this board, that the board makes a real commitment to CSBA. Get as much information as you can, so we can have the best board possible, so I just want to thank everybody for their level of commitment as well. I want to thank the superintendent for his commitment to CSBA. You know, I don't know how many new board member orientations you've had the pleasure of spending all day at, but, but it's just, I also know that there are plenty of new board members that don't have the opportunity to get to spend that day with their superintendent. So Joe, I really appreciate your commitment, and for everybody to take the time to attend a board dinner is always, always a treat to, just to get a chance to get to know one another, and I think it does, does create a better, more cohesive board, so I want to thank everybody for their commitment. Anything from members of the board?
Yes, well, I would like to also say that CSBA Conference is the first thing on my list in terms of board reports. I think it's a wonderful conference, and I appreciate going every year. And I think we, you can always learn more from that conference, because there is so much there. Topics, you know, so many topics that apply. And I hope we all can continue to peruse the materials that we got. And I also want to say, I went to a couple of the follow-up trainings in the past year through Masters in Governance, their CSBA program. And I'm gonna go to the number two session, which is on policy and student learning, next month, which I look forward to. And I think their trainings are great, so I just want to encourage any of you to go to any of the follow-up ones. Then I also want to give a ledge team report. I'm the representative of ledge team for our board, and I also am doing that role as a Miramone parent for Miramone. And we had a ledge team meeting last week. We're planning Advocacy Day, our annual Advocacy Day, which will be April seventeenth. So I hope everyone can put that on our cal, their calendar, and parents out there in the audience too. We plan a day with the San Ramon District where we invite all of our legislators and some other speakers. And we're planning, we're hoping to get Kevin Gordon, but we haven't, we had to find out if he's available. And we're inviting all of our local legislators to that, and that's April seventeenth. They'll be in San Ramon again at their community center. And that's a, it's a great group, because it's our local ledge team, which the meeting was last week, was all representatives from all the districts that feed into the Akalani's district, so Arinda, Maraga, La Pieta, Wana Creek, and Akalani's are all represented. And there was a very full attendance, and there was a presentation from Chris Larnis on their budget last week. So, and then for Advocacy Day, you know, that'll be a completely different agenda on just education and funding and legislative piece. So, and then related to that, the governor's budget having just come out, I'm looking forward to hearing more about that and through school services. So, thank you.
Okay, I think there are gonna be a lot of the same themes. I just wanted to really appreciate, mention that I appreciated the California School Association meeting too. And, you know, it's, it's an occasion for us to be together and learn something, but also to take back and, you know, integrate it into our board planning. And I particularly found sessions on planning, you know, given where we are, the ability to plan and think ahead. Communication. There was a great session on how Common Core is affecting the education of kids with different learning abilities, from the gifted to, to otherwise, and the state association gifted children were there. Just was a fascinating conversation, I learned a lot, and I think it's, it's changing. Differentiated learning under the Common Core is gonna change a lot. And with all the publicity about Common Core, I think we have an obligation to sort of explain how some of these things are being integrated. And I just found it really educational. The other thing I found greatly educational, I just want to thank staff, is so the public knows, the staff spends a lot of time with the newbies. And this year, because of sort of the odd schedule of the election, it didn't happen as early as often as it has in the past. It's still happening now, but that concentrated time with staff, and I think the way it's being spread out is actually a benefit to us, because we're getting longer amounts of time to really get to know staff and, and jump on issues. And that's a big time commitment on the staff part, and I just want to appreciate that as well. And then finally, you know, we've had a lot go on in the last month in our district, and I want to thank the community for those one-on-one conversations that are constructive and done with dignity so that we can move forward. And I appreciated people with all different sort of views doing that, and I think that's, that's important for us to keep doing. So anyway, it's good to be here.
Thank you.
Well, the other thing I wanted to highlight was, for our two board members, the OAS promotion ceremony is something that traditionally all board members attend. We hand out promotion certificates, and that date is June eleventh, and I believe five PM at OAS. I already shared that with Carol. And I know that we have a site visit at Sleepy Hollow this Friday at nine AM. Now it's time for the superintendent report.
And you know, I think almost all of it has been said, so I'm not gonna repeat it, but I'm impressed with this, this board continuing the traditions of other boards on their own training and attending the conference, so congratulations on that. I do want to congratulate our business office staff and Lorraine's leadership for the clean audit report. That's no small task, and we did change auditors, and it's a lot of extra work when we change auditors to, to do that, that whole reorientation. So, congratulations on that, thanks for their good work. And again, I congratulate our collective bargaining teams for their work to bring forward a completed contract. It was, it was long work, and I think that everybody rose to the occasion, made it happen, so thank you board for supporting that.
All right, future agenda items, does anybody have anything they want to see on future agenda?
Yeah, I have, I have a few items. First, I'd like to get, I can't remember if I asked first, I'd like to get an update on math pathways at OAS. Sort of how it's going this year, what we're planning for the future, access enrollment, sort of an overview of where we're at and the discussion about where we're heading. I'm sure this is out there, but I'd like to see a governance workshop happen, I'm sure that's in the planning stages, but I want to make sure that it includes a review and adoption, hopefully, of a governance handbook and a discussion of board strategic planning. And in light of the governor's budget coming out, I think it's also probably wise for us to start having a budget workshop or budget workshops that could include an analysis of possible respirations, enhancements, et cetera, and all the figures associated with that. And then last month, they did ask for a presentation on extended day kindergarten, so I was gonna see if we had it.
I would like to support Julie's recommendation to put extended day kindergarten. I've heard from a lot of parents, and that's been fascinating me.
Yes, I would like to also say that kindergarten needs to be on the agenda, and we also had a lot of parents talk about it. I would like to make sure that the staff gets teacher input in order to do that, and I assume that's gonna happen, but I just want to say it anyway, because sometimes things start from parents, and I want to make sure we have input from all stakeholders on this. I think also that Julie mentioned a governance workshop. We talked at the CSBA Conference about a board workshop, and maybe that's related to the same thing. I think we need to do that or start it as soon as possible. I don't know what, I've already requested dates, I don't know, Matt, you were about to send out dates, but I, I know that one Masters in Governance thing that I went to last year, somebody mentioned they have even just short board workshop times scheduled before a regular board meeting. And if we can't find a certain date, I would really do something like that, then have to wait two or three months. Because I think it's really important we start just for board protocols and things, especially since we have two new board members. In addition to that, also related to CSBA, I want to ask again that we have a session where we can talk about our superintendent evaluation process rather than waiting till the end of the year, because we need to just understand what that process is, and they had a lot of good suggestions on a format and that kind of thing. And I think that's important, and I hope we can put that on our agenda soon, next month or, yeah, next month. And if we can schedule a special meeting, that would be even better, because Julie also mentioned a budget workshop, and I don't know how we could do all these topics quickly enough to, to keep in, in line with the budget process and everything we have to do as a board, because we can't wait till May and June. We also have the, you know, the whole Hellcat process. So if we could do a budget workshop and combine it with the government's workshop and have superintendent evaluation, to me, those are three really important priorities that are, you know, not what's happening normally at a regular meeting. So I hope we can schedule some other date for that. Thank you. That's Jason.
No, I second the kindergarten.
Wonderful.
Third.
Okay, fourth.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, but first, I'm just gonna let everybody know this meeting will be adjourned in honor of the memory of Jean Leifert, nineteen twenty-nine to twenty-fourteen. Among her myriad of accomplishments, Ms. Leifert serves as a teacher, interim principal, board member, and board president to the Arindas Union School District. So I entertain a motion for adjournment. Does we adjourn?
Second?
The second.
Okay, we are now adjourned in memory of Jean Leifert. Thank you.